This conference will now be recorded.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll start with the public hearing, obviously, and we'll see if you would read the notice.
Please take notice that the Lake Placid Village Board will hold a public hearing on Monday, July 18th, 2022, at 4:45 in the Main Board Meeting Room at North Elbert Town Hall, 2693 Main Street, Lake Placid, New York, concerning the following short-term rental moratorium variance application. Just an idea to spray property located at 12 Harbor Lane, condominium number seven. The public is invited to attend in person or online. There will be a go-to meeting login provided on the Village website by the end of day, Friday, July 15th, 2022, at www.villageoflakeplacid.ny.gov. All interested persons are invited to attend the public hearing and will be given opportunity to be heard. Anita Anthony Estling.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Nobody here.
Just here.
No, I mean here on public page here.
Well, that's the applicant.
At this point, let her have a chance to say her piece.
Thank you, Chris.
Can you hear us? Are you muted? Are you?
Yeah, I can hear you guys fine.
Yes, please go right ahead.
Sure. So, since you've said the variance, because I've been renting my apartment since, I guess, June, May 2021. We are properties for sure, okay?
You're breaking up on us.
Oh, gosh, we're having a storm. Is that better?
Yes.
Yeah, and we're having a huge torrential downpour here, sorry. So, the reason that I applied for the variance is because we've been renting the apartment for the past year. And I was never advised, I didn't know we needed a rental permit. We've never rented before, so I asked when we met with them, you know, what do we need to do? Just tell us everything we got to do. We've never done this before. And they said, no contract, we'll take care of it, you're good. So then in March, I think it was March 22nd or 23rd, 2022, I got an email from the Realtor saying everyone needs to reapply and get like, recertified for their rental permit, you know, and just reactivate it. And I was like, what rental permit? I have no idea what this is talking about. So I immediately called Debbie Standen, who is the Realtor I use the most. And she said, okay, yeah, so, you know, I called the Village Office. So I called the Village Office, I spoke with a couple of folks, I ended up talking with Anita, who's lovely. And she told me it was too late, that, you know, that I couldn't, I couldn't apply because I never had one. So she said I had to wait because the attorney was doing an application for people like me. And I, and she'd let me know when it was available. So as soon as she told me that it was available, then I filled out the form and everything. And I tried to get our bylaws, which took a little while to get and everything, and I sent it in. So from, from my standpoint, the reason that I applied is because, you know, we had already booked rentals for July and August, and I didn't want to do anything against the town policy. The Realtor told me that it was too late to cancel the rentals, so I didn't want to go against, you know, the town policy. I didn't, I didn't realize it was an issue. So, that, that's what's going on. I didn't want to break the law or anything like that. Like, whether I grew up there or not, I just kind of follow the rules. So that's why I applied for the variance. And I apologize, we really, we sincerely did not know that we were supposed to have a permit. We would have done it immediately. So that's, that's the story. But it's not for, you know, financial. But I know, I was reading in the paper, a lot of this is for people who, you know, they can't afford to wait for, you know, September, you know, when, when the variance is, I guess, the moratorium is maybe done, I'm not really sure. I don't live there, so I'm not really sure what the whole story is. But the reason I did it is because we.
So, so you're, you're aware that the standard for the Village Board to consider in granting a variance is whether or not the moratorium has caused financial hardship? And in your application for variance, you have stated, no, it has not caused you any financial hardship. Did you want to change that answer?
No, no, I don't, because that would be incorrect. No, so I didn't understand that. I was just advised by the Realtor to do it. They said, well, we have rentals coming, so you have to apply. Didn't realize it was for financial issue until I sent it in and everything was done. And my, I was reading in the paper why people are denied. And I realized it's appropriate for me to apply to this in the first place. So, no, we are not financially.
So, the other thing is, if, if it's your intention to have short-term rentals in your unit after the moratorium is lifted, and if this is one of the properties that is going to be allowed to have short-term rentals under any amended short-term rental law, are you aware of the fact that in order to have a short-term rental, you have to have a water meter in, in your unit?
Yes, so Anita, they told me last week about that. And, um, let me see, Tim. My gosh, he was very nice. What was his name?
Jim.
Manning?
Jim Manning, yes. I mean, that is not a trick question, but we know that you don't have a water meter currently.
Yeah, I know, I know. So I was advised of that. So Tim Manning, my mom, my mom lives in town, so she let him into my apartment, and he looked at my apartment, so he called me after he was in my apartment. And he said, I really don't see how I can put a water meter in here without breaking down. I didn't get a formal report because it was just him kind of calling me.
So we didn't get a report because I asked, I asked that he go over there so we would have all the facts. And the Village can put a water meter in, there is room. But you would have to have a plumber do a little bit of work to accommodate the water meter. So I think probably what Mr. Manning was saying, or meant to say, is, yes, a water meter will fit in your unit, but your plumber will have to do a little work. The Village does not do plumbing work for individuals. So I, I think that's the appropriate answer. And the reason I'm asking you this is because we've been told that there are some properties that, that can't accommodate a water meter due to space issues, but yours can. So I just wanted to make sure that you knew that even today, if the variance was granted, you would not be able to get a permit because you don't have a water meter.
Okay, I do understand that now. That wasn't communicated to me, but I don't think that was his fault. It was a quick phone call. So when he said, no, I, you know, I don't know how I would put one in here or whatever. It was two minutes, so it's not his fault. So I assumed I would get a formal report later. So yeah, I'm absolutely, that's only reasonable and fair for the Village. I don't rent it that much, but it is, you know, because I know that some people pay. And I, and I was asking Anita how I paid for this water meter. And she said there's just as, like a standard straight fee, which obviously isn't fair. And, you know, listen, I go up a lot, so, you know, just my family, we don't use a lot of water, but it should be based on how much water. I have no problem with that.
So, and you, you do have the ability, without needing a short-term rental permit, as you probably know, to rent it for periods of time more than 30 days?
No, I understand, but I'm actually from the area. I grew up there, and my mom is there, so I come up a lot. And also my brother stays there to visit my mother. My mother's in Raybrook, so we come up a lot. So I don't, and in fact, I've actually turned away renters because I want to come and visit. I hike, I kayak, I rock climb, so it's really my home, so it's not something I'd rent for longer than a short period of time. You know, we didn't even, over the past year, we have went in for, for then, I think the longest was like five or seven days. Typically, it's three or four, you know. But it's my homes, I want to be my home. So yeah, that's not something I'm interested in.
Do you have anything else? Anybody ask questions or?
Have you been collecting bed tax on these prior rentals?
I'm sorry.
Have you been collecting bed tax on these prior rentals?
You know, oh, that is, I'm sorry.
So, my one question, and it might help with that. You agree to have other rented properties be your kind of caretaker and rent your place for you? Is that correct?
Yeah, like I've never done it on my own independently, so even though they have a hundred percent. Yeah, because I work a lot if I'm not in the other end tax, so I don't have time to do any of that stuff. So they've done 100% of the rentals.
The other thing, I'm just, I, it's crazy. So when they agreed to rent your place, they didn't tell you needed an STR permit as the owner?
No, I, I actually was, listen, I really liked them a lot, and I liked Debbie a lot, but I was really upset because I'm like, guys, you have to be thinking that. I don't even know if I, do I have this? What is this? You know, I was pretty upset, but I don't think it was a purposeful thing. I think it was just a slip through the crack thing, and I think they did it purposely. Yeah, I've never rented before and I don't live in town, so I had no idea about any of this. And my mom lives in Raybrook, so she doesn't even get like the local paper anymore. She's stuck in the local paper, she's done, I don't know why. So I didn't know. And the first time hearing of this is March 22nd or 23rd this year, 2022. It's like, oh my God, am I gonna go to jail? Like, I called Anita, I'm like, am I like illegally renting my place? I didn't mean to. It wasn't a purpose, but I, it was not purposeful, I can assure you. I'm very much a rule follower, so I have no idea. And I'm surprised honestly that they didn't have a list of everyone who didn't have a rental permit. They, you know, reached out to the owner and said, like, hey, we're not renting your place because you didn't get a permit. You know, you're not on our list of people who are cleared to rent. I was just surprised by the whole thing. I don't know the protocol. Like, I've literally never done this before. I have a frog in my throat, excuse me. But it was not on purpose, and I don't think it was on purpose on their end either. It's an error. You know, I don't think any of this is purposeful. It's a mistake that needs to be rectified, for sure. But in whatever way you guys think is appropriate.
Thank you.
Anybody else have anything? Kimball? Okay, anything else you'd like to add? Justina?
No, that's it. I want to apologize. It was really a mistake that we didn't realize we were making. And yeah, rectify it as, as possible in whatever way you guys want me to rectify it. And I certainly got a water meter, I think that's very.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, bye.
That worked out well, 5 o'clock. Okay, so at this point, nobody else speak or ask questions? Or want to ask questions about that one or not?
She's looking down, being very quiet.
Any questions? Okay, so at this point, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll open up our regular board meeting. And we will start right out with the public hearing, regular board minutes, and we'll have a chance to review it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And item B is the electric department's advertisement for bids and tree trimming and removal. I know it kind of went to Janet late.
I got it.
Is it any?
I think it's fine, yep.
Okay.
You can reject any and all bids.
Is that the important part?
That's the important part.
Did it pick it? Jerry pick it?
Does anybody have any questions on it?
Kimball, are you going to send it to the people you know who do? I was gonna send it to Bupney that won one of them. I'm gonna send it to as many people as I can get contacts for. So definitely to Bupney, to Arbor Care that did the lodge road, and the big ones that are interested, that did the real estate. I know, I was gonna prime for information, but I didn't want to show our cards. You know, I wanted to ask him how much they were getting per flying mile.
Okay, any other questions at this point, or do I have a motion to go out for bid?
I'll make a motion.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
This work needs to be done before you can do your.
Well, it's a nice step to stipulation or no? It was not a stipulation because I felt that would drive the price up. But we would prioritize a lot of the work if they couldn't do it all before the first.
Prioritize the important parts.
Yeah.
The bad parts.
Of the worst parts.
Okay, an item D, Janet, where would you like to go on that at this point?
D or C?
C.
You haven't done C yet.
I'm sorry, I shouldn't have done that. Illuminating concept, postal cameras on Main Street, at this point, we need to table that as we.
Well, I did.
Unless we change that.
No, I just wanted to say that I read the information that was provided. It seems to me it's in two parts. One is professional services for $10,000, and the other is purchasing of equipment for the difference, $18,000. So, the $18,000 part would have to comply with our purchasing procedures.
Okay.
And it doesn't mean it has to go out to bid because it doesn't reach that threshold. But I think under our procurement policy, anything in that range, that $18,000 range, you have to get at least, what did you say?
Three written quotes.
No, three written quotes. You don't have to put out an RFP, no. We can always, we can always use our, the professional services for Mr. Wilson, if that's who you want to do the work, to install it and hook it all up. So if it's your pleasure, you wouldn't necessarily have to table it tonight with the understanding that we do have to make some calls and get at least three written quotes based on the specs that we have for the cameras. The only thing that I would like to add is that I noticed in the big specs, it didn't include the enclosure for waterproofing, and, and you know, those are expensive, so.
I did talk to him today about that.
And?
And he did make that sound like it was proper. He said most of them don't come with them, so that's an addition you have to add on.
Correct, but it's also waterproof, and what are these cameras rated to?
I didn't get the impression he even thought we needed them. We could check on that.
I have a meeting with him tomorrow morning. Tomorrow.
I got the impression that the cameras were pretty well, but that's just a quick impression. I did bring it up to him, though.
Okay.
Doesn't that waterproof them?
Oh, that's on my list.
They don't waterproof the cameras, but they have to put it in an enclosure. I would assume that if you're 20 below, I mean, we have cameras on the venues that have to be encased.
He made it sound like the color of it was more a problem than the.
The color of the camera? Okay.
Said you may have to spray it black to match the poles or something, but so they blend in.
If outdoor cameras behind the store and they're not enclosed by anything.
Really?
Yeah, it works just fine.
I think it's probably different on the top of white face, when the snowmaker's in, there's no guns.
Well, they're everywhere. I mean, they're on top of, they're on top of the Olympic Center, too, so.
It's a good question.
I'll ask him tomorrow. So do we want to table it until we find out how much that's gonna cost?
Well, I think, I think the, perhaps, procedure would be to say, we, we will comply with our procurement policy in moving forward to get bids. I don't mean bids according to an RFP, but to get quotes.
Well, just if these push it up over $25,000, then we do have to go out with it.
Right, but that's gonna be another $7,000, so, yeah, we'll have to see. But we don't know the answer right now.
Right.
So do we want to try to pass this to make contingencies or table it? I think part of the problem we might have is wanting them in time for, you know, the, and for budgeting issues. I don't know how readily available they are, but it's pleasure of the board, whatever you'd like to do.
I think we approve them conditionally based on our.
I mean, all we have to do is follow our procurement policy.
I'll make a motion to approve it based on those contingencies.
But then, then your three quotes are gonna come in, so you're gonna have to pick one. So, but we should go forward.
Yeah, good, okay.
Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Have you spoken to Scott about getting it from here to the final, to the P D?
I told him that we were missing 100 feet by the, I can't, the miracle snow belt there. And 100 feet we discovered got omitted by the golden arrow, so.
So is there an answer?
Just take down your sign and move.
Well, I think, I think we're gonna eventually do that one patch of red brick, is my understanding.
Which patch?
So, patch from where order's leaving off, play the snow dump up to Olympic Drive.
So you're gonna put some pipe in the ground there?
When the brick is done yet.
Yeah, but this is, we're talking about getting this done before.
Maybe this will stick the brick ahead.
We have been looking into the brick, but we haven't gotten quotes yet on that, so we'll have to see.
I mean, is it possible, this, I'm asking?
Certainly is, as long as we, if we tear up the sidewalk, it is. The sidewalk's garbage, so.
Old sidewalk, not new sidewalk.
And did you rectify the one on Main Street? Did you go out in the road there or what did you do?
We are going to at some point.
Before they repay, obviously, September.
Yes.
Any other questions? And which way do you vote, Peter? So far, we had two.
He said.
Did he? I didn't hear him. I thought he was asking him. Okay, so if that's the case, then item C is passed. I'll be here tomorrow, because I've got to see Scott, too, on that, so we'll see how that goes. Okay, now we're on item D.
There's a, there's a proposed contract that would cover the Ironman. And then this year, next year, and the following year. That is going back and forth with comments being made. And this is what Ironman believes is the final contract. For this year, next year, and 2024. All of my comments, questions were answered satisfactorily.
Okay. Any of the board have any questions?
I think there was a couple of concerns brought up by numbers of the task force. Numbers for this year, which I think we just got confirmed for Ironman. It was 2,900 registered, so they stayed under the 3,000. And then the community contact person is in place and has been fielding calls. So those were two of the concerns that had come through that we just got answers within the last half hour, 45 minutes. And then I guess the other one, and I haven't seen this last one. What was the thing that was added?
The one that was just added this afternoon is under.
A cancellation clause.
Yeah, they have, under the proposed contract, they had the right to terminate the contract under certain conditions. And I had suggested that there should be a timeline by which they'd have to do that so that the whole community knows whether it's gonna happen or not happen. So we did agree upon an eight months prior notice.
That's good.
That was the latest, that was the latest change.
Is that a one-sided? Can the Village do that as well, or are you telling them?
Uh, no, it's pretty one-sided.
Well, but at least it also doesn't have you book your entire hotel or slam this hotel up and then cancel two weeks out, and you have no way to replace the business.
So that was the one that I had to move, I know.
Am I allowed to say something as a community member yet, but no?
Um, sure.
I don't know the protocol, but, so I was on the Ironman Task Force. And just, I, I just heard that you guys were talking, going to possibly renew the contract for another three years. And my concern is that, it was my understanding on the task force that they were supposed to do, you know, A, B, C, D, and E. And then after this race, we were gonna see if they did that. And if they did, then we would look at, you know, racing races in the future. So I was surprised that you guys were meeting on this right now to approve this.
Well, there's no contract for this year, this summer, I mean, that's my lead.
This, this one, yeah, this one is here.
Well, we don't have it.
That would be the contract.
Oh, okay.
You know, for liability reasons, that's something. I don't think anyone knew.
Well, but I'm just, but it, like, we spent, you know, eight months on the task force figuring all this stuff out. And then they, you know, we were supposed to look at the end of this year, after, after the race, to see if they did the things that they agreed to do during these task force meetings.
Yeah, well, that, that never ended in a contract. I thought for that, too, the task force would be the one that reviews what happened in, for this year. There's something in the paper in this contract.
But the council that it's going to go to is supposed to have committee members from that, correct? That's my understanding.
It's an events council.
But then, but I signed this, we have to your contract.
That's correct. So as a community member, I'm, I hope you don't sign the contract. I mean, I, I just, I, I really think that the community needs something, the, the race needs to do some things to make it a better community-minded race. And the, the Ironman Task Force also felt like that at the time when I was on it and Peter was on it. So.
Does anyone have any comments to that, or?
I mean, ideally, the contract would have it out for the Village as well if they don't meet the points of the task force.
Just so everybody knows that this is not a contract just between Ironman and the Village. It's more parties, it's four parties. It's Ironman, it's the town, it's the Village, and it's Roost. It's, so, it's not just ours.
And if any one part refuses, it couldn't happen, right?
Right, well, this one's happening, this one in 2022.
Right, but I mean, it's going forward, yes.
Yeah, but going forward, there wouldn't be, and I don't know whether the date has been determined for next year yet.
Except that.
That was supposed to be determined yesterday for the contract. Now, now maybe Roost knows what it is.
Fourth Sunday, I don't know. Thereabouts. Well, I guess it's the pleasure of the board, but I would think that from all the talks that I've had and all that I've heard, and I do appreciate all the work the committee did, it does sound like for the first time in a long time, we have had representatives from Ironman that are talking with us, working with us, showing good faith, making changes. I do think that the Ironman has been with us now, is it 20 or 21 years?
At least.
And I do think they're showing good faith, and they're gonna have that time to make changes. I don't have any problems with giving them that chance, especially with how well they address some of our issues. But I guess it's up to the board to make that determination if you want to make a motion to have me sign the contract, or if you.
No, just curious, if you guys don't sign the contract, they can't register athletes.
For the next year, correct.
For the following year at Ironman, correct?
That's right.
No contract going forward.
I mean, technically, it shouldn't have this year either.
Precisely, but I'm just, I know, I think that was the push.
Well, definitely, I mean, for a race like this, you've got to be able to sign up while the iron's hot, kind of thing.
If I sign it, the Village won't have to do any overtime work. Well, if we don't sign it, what would happen Sunday? I think the race will go on, I think. Well, yes, but. I, I think, I think there will be some, the, the insurance could be an issue.
Okay.
Could be. I haven't seen their, have they given us their insurance for this year?
Haven't given it to me unless, and he gets done then.
So.
I know they're normally pretty good about it.
Pardon me?
I know that they're normally pretty good.
Yeah, I know, but I don't know, I haven't, I haven't seen it.
Well, I think I said it right along, I don't know, is it 21 years again that they've been here?
And let's go over and check our t-shirts.
99.
Check our t-shirts, yeah. You know, like I said, I think the fact that they're proactively working on this after all these years, to not give them a chance, if they're working in good faith, to do their best to improve things. I mean, I think already this year, you're not seeing people training, or training on the road and clogging up the roads, which is one of the complaints.
I'll make the motion to approve the Ironman contract.
Is there a second? Okay.
Oh, that's a tough one. Don't keep up the initiative.
Where's Jason? He's, couldn't even do a word quote.
You know, I do see the progress that Ironman's made in a couple of things, but I feel like extending this out of three years, or two more years, we have nothing to hold, hold them accountable for to make additional changes. And I think that's the feedback we've gotten from the community, is like, how do we keep holding them accountable?
So let, let me just say this, there is a provision in here, it says, "The maximum number of permitted race registrants for 2023 will be mutually agreed upon within seven days following this event." So you do have a chance, and then like, also, the next one for 2024, the maximum number of permitted race registrants for 2024 will be mutually agreed upon within seven days following the 2023 event. So, within a week after this event, uh, you do, you do have the right to agree or not agree with, on, on the number that it'll be for next year.
What's the number, Janet? Because they always have, you know, 20, 50% drop dollars or so, on, on Thursday.
I don't, I don't.
But I think you have to, you have to say the registrations, because you can't guess who's gonna drop off.
But this says, "Number of permitted race registrants," it doesn't say who actually repeats.
Right. Races.
So, I believe, and I've not been part of the task force or anything, but I heard enough, that says, okay, they may register X number of people, but there's a, some percentage attrition rate.
Attrition rate, yeah.
And I, I think historically, they can probably show you, that year to year, it's whatever the percentage is that actually participate.
From the water.
Yeah, thank you, never mind finish, but.
Jump in the water.
But would they take the percent, the lower percentage and add the drop dollars?
I, I think they, no, I think they'd take, they'd take the number of registrants would be the higher number, minus whatever the average attrition rate is. So I don't know, I've heard numbers as big as 20%, but 10%.
Well, then, I think a lot of it's whether, it just depends on the year.
I think people register and get sick, or register and can't, and get a training accident, or a muscle soreness, and can't participate. But we should be able to get those figures from them on a year-to-year basis, uh, at least going back, I mean, I don't know how accurate COVID years are, but
Probably the last 15 years, yeah.
You go back, you could probably say, and I think they have those statistics.
So everybody else has signed the contract, correct?
I haven't seen it signed by anybody, I just got this an hour ago.
Or it was an athlete, or unless, or they signed the old one.
And I know Roost. Yeah, I just got this an hour ago with my change.
Okay.
My change that hadn't been changed, I got the other changes earlier, and this changed today, in an hour.
Is it possible, so to sign the contract for this, this year, this event?
I, I.
Well, that's also not gonna help them to start booking for people for this year.
I, I don't think so, it's, it's an integrated, uh, three-year contract, but I am pointing out, it does give you, um, it, it does give you the idea that it would be agreed upon mutually for the number of races.
Is that the biggest issue, is the number of registrants? No, it's not.
No, and I think she's just saying you can accept that.
I'm just, I'll use that as a.
I think that was one of the tabs, that was.
Yeah, for Dr. Ponder.
Because I've seen, you know, when the race, you know, when I raced, and it was 2,000 people, and there was only 1,600 people, it's a totally different impact on the community.
Well, what prompted the letter was bad information. Somebody gave somebody else bad information, we checked it out, and it turned out to be not, so.
So, 2,900 is a lot, too.
It's still under the 3,000 threshold, what do you, I didn't set the 3,000.
And I, I've chatted with a couple other people on the task force, in your opinion, do you feel like Ironman's kind of turning a corner, and they're willing to work on it, you've seen?
I've, yeah, I've seen that they're willing to do things, for sure. And that's what, when they met with us, they, you know, we had a list of things that we wanted them to work on, and they're working towards that. But to kind of, somebody else, somebody said, you know, "Hold them to the fire," I mean, I feel like there needs to be, uh, you know, like, this, you have to do this in order to continue to race, they want to race here, for sure. You know, and I just, I want some, you know, culpability, and I want, you know.
Well, that's what we fought to keep the task force in the contract, because that got pulled out of the first iteration of the contract, so.
If you go bankrupt, then we can terminate the contract.
Hey, there's a motion on the floor.
Well, there's a first, we haven't got a second yet. And I do think that, you know, based on, we are their second most popular race, they are going to do everything in their power to not lose this, and which would mean complying and keeping the local community as happy as they can. I do think it's gonna take some time.
I don't agree with you, Eric.
Well, that's your opinion.
I mean, just the initial contract.
You really think, you really think it would be so short-sighted to say, okay, we'll just get two more years, and we'll trash what they say, and then we won't ever give another?
The initial, the initial contract that they gave us, that showed my cards. They just disregarded the task force.
Well, but if they don't come through in the next two years, then they're never gonna be here again. Do you really think they're that short-sighted, they don't want to be here long-term?
I think my rumor is that they.
I'm saying 25 years or something like that.
No, but I mean, why would you give up your second most important venue after the Hawaii, I can't see them doing it, but, I can say, I, it's your pleasure.
Well, you could second, I have to call the board.
That'd be fun, wouldn't it, okay, and we all, we could be tied here, couldn't we?
That's a denial.
Well, you've heard my opinion, I'll, I'll second, and let's get it to a vote, then, and let's.
I'm going to vote to approve, but I think they've got us by the balls, excuse my language, something Jackie would say.
Thank you.
Would she say, "Excuse my language," or would she say it first?
Wouldn't say "excuse my language." Peter.
I don't think we have, I shouldn't say it, but.
I think we do, I mean, we have to stay engaged with this task force, too.
Oh, I definitely agree, yeah.
And we have to stay, we've already missed that deadline of yesterday, so I mean.
For the date next year.
Right.
Unless you, and I mean, but they could, they really talk to Roost, they don't talk to me, they don't talk to you, so.
Okay, all right.
Roost is the conduit.
Roost gives them the money.
Yeah, and Roost is the conduit for all the information, so actually, for all I know, they could have already, they could, you're right.
Okay, so we have a three contentious, first and second.
I didn't hear the second. Oh, okay.
You were busy with.
I was busy, I would have said shorter, so I wouldn't have said.
Hopefully, there'll be some editing going on here.
Just recording the whole thing.
Lauren's got us down.
Any other, any other comments from the board or questions? Okay, if that's the case, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Are your votes aye as well? Okay.
And, um, when I, um, convey this back, I will convey it with, you know, the feeling that I got here, that it was with some reluctance to do this.
A lot of the work.
Yeah, yeah.
But we, I mean, we expect them to improve themselves and improve relations, and I think, you know, it comes back to what we said before. For every one person you talk to that's against it, someone's for it, and to not give them a chance to improve their odds from 50/50 to 70/30, or 75/25, I think they, they're entitled to that, but, and I believe that they'll bargain in good faith, and they'll do, do good things.
I have a curiosity, when do they sign up registrants for the upcoming year, after the race or before?
The day after, the day after.
You can't. So there's no, no way you can see if the, the items of the task force were met, like, up till the day of the race, and then the minute after, no?
I mean, the goal was that the, the task force, I believe, on, on, that.
I wasn't on it, though, I wasn't.
The task force, the task force would basically make a judgment if they've done the things they committed to. And then, and then, basically, we go to 23 year, I believe.
Yes.
Would be considered if they can.
Yep. Well, that's what I'm saying, like, if you can see how the race went, and then decide to sign the contract, based on if they fulfilled what they were supposed to do with the task force.
I mean, I don't. I mean, is, isn't it true, the task force, that the race, we know the hours it takes, we know the roads it closes, it's just whether the numbers are so huge that it's worse.
No, it's.
It's more than the numbers, it's the training camp, the whole, that's before Ironman, it's, um, the, a contact person during the race, you know, having a contact person, there's a huge list.
Emergency services, working with, you know, the race, um, escorts, you know, on the day of the race because of congestion, communication to athletes, I mean, there's a, a list that the task force, and it's a, it's, this was, the list was contentious, you know, in the task force.
It's all the way.
I mean, we went back and forth for eight months on this, you know, so we were just hoping that, you know, like, Mark asked, you know, is, do you feel like Ironman is, you know, working towards, um, you know, better, and I, I, I do think that, but, you know, I think that there should be some, holding to the fire, and, you know, if, if they really want it, they'll do these things that aren't big asks, they're just to better the race for our community, to better the race for the, you know, our village.
Is it true, has anyone noticed, I mean, I, from my, I can see where the bikers usually go out training, I've seen so few bikes, I would almost say there wasn't an Ironman. I'll bet if I took the last four months, I haven't seen more than 20 bikes go by, I'm not telling.
Less this year than the past year, but I don't know why.
Well, and part of it's the construction and the cascade, people want to.
Oh, that's exactly what I was thinking.
I haven't stopped right through the notch.
You're right.
It's just as busy as hell.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, I think you're exactly right.
And they're on both sides of the road, in the marriage.
Because they can't go down 73, okay. Are they courteous?
No.
No, definitely, some they're gonna have to work on. Okay. Um, item E.
Do you want to name the letter, or do you want?
Uh, we don't have a letter, so we're totally.
What's that?
We don't have a letter, so we will table it most likely.
Okay.
So what it is, is asking for the matching funds for the comp plan that's going through, there's a grant. So the town's contributing 15, the village is contributing 15, climate smart communities will contribute 30. So Haley was supposed to draft. Yes, yeah, so this is for the consult, for the consultants to do the comp plan, so when Haley gets that, and it needs to be done before the end of the month. So when Haley gets that letter done, that's what that's about, but we had all agreed that we would be doing this, we have to leave the comp plan, okay?
Janet, is it something that we, I mean, is there anything that intricate in it that you'd want to look and see, for something we could?
Well, I'll, I'll look at it, but it also, you know, you're gonna have to know where that money's coming from in the budget, when you sign a letter saying you'll pledge 15,000, you better have in, in your motion, is it coming out of a fund balance, is, where's it coming from?
It was my understanding we did that already, didn't we, we pledged it?
We did, yeah, okay.
Quite, quite a few months ago, a few months ago.
Okay, out of general fund?
Yep.
That's all, you know, when you make the, because it's a fu- kind of a funding motion that you can indicate what the source of the funds is gonna be.
So, we can either table that, depending on the timing, how crucial it is, or maybe Janet's approval, once we do get a letter and Janet signs off on it, we could just authorize me to sign it?
Yeah, it's a letter of intent, that's, yeah, yeah, so can I make a motion to?
What I said.
Yes, what you exactly said.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Um, communications board request for the beach area, item F.
So Roost has graciously agreed to pay for the. Up to $5,000, is that, and would that inc- my question was it to you or Diana, that the code, we had agreed that, that Brad would install it. We found a location, I talked to Brad, um, they would do the labor in creating the look to match the other signage. So I'm assuming that's coming out of that money?
Yeah, yeah, because there's, there's a leftover.
Okay, so it's just the labor, yeah, so it's just the labor for the village. So I would like to make a motion on the table to, um, allow for the, for the signage board, accompany communications board to have the public beach.
Second.
All in one, right?
Yes.
Well, and this is kind of a, a demo to see if it is used, or?
Or by the library? Yes, or by the library, like, when there's two signage, there's, there's, I, I showed Brad where.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can I ask a question about that, just quick? So, um, one thing, I emailed Jackie, the name of, the, the question came from the people who are making it, we want it to say Peacock Park, Lake Placid, New York, or just Lake Placid, New York, on the sign, I wasn't sure.
Is that something for the appearance frame?
Or think if you ever wanted to move it, you would, if, if you put Peacock Park, then you're stuck, yeah, if it never got moved, you just go by Placid.
And I would even put village, just put Lake Placid, that covers everyone.
Yeah, okay.
And no logo.
And no logo, okay.
Because it's a town beach, I mean, the town runs it, I would just tell them.
Okay.
That's happening, because, and maybe they have, I don't know.
It's going by the little library, right? No, it's going, um, here, I'll show you.
It's going by the gazebo, isn't it?
No.
We're talking, no?
No.
We're not talking about the sign going in the, near the playground?
Yes, we are talking about that.
Yes.
Well, you can tell us something else. You got sea sauce.
Uh, we're going where Lori Fitzgerald is standing, so this is coming down, and that's coming down, and it's going where?
So, because it's two-sided, so, so if you're just walking on the sidewalk and access it, and it's on the playground, and access it, go.
I got Tom's feeling, we're sorry.
So, it's going, I don't, this.
No, that's.
Correct.
Yep.
Very good finding.
I would, I would just tell them, I will, because, you know.
And just, and that one other thing about it, the QCR code, there's a bottom thing that, um.
So you can bring it up on your.
So they can bring it up on their phones, the communication board, but I, I was talking to her today, and she also said, you can have different links on that QCR code, so we can link, you know, town happenings or whatever, like, if you guys want something else to be linked on that, you know, that.
Maybe Roost would want something linked, maybe you should ask MJ.
To put, put the weekly happenings, the insider?
Yeah, that's not a bad idea.
Put the LP insider on it.
Okay. Uh, item H, electric department promotions.
Ah, G.
G.
Oh, I'm scared, I do that again, I keep circling these wrong, sorry about that. Um, consideration of economic development position, might, you want to speak to that, or would you like me to? My understanding is, it's just the proposal to look into the position, it's nothing more than that, just to proceed to the next step.
Other than, um, in further meetings, they would like the village to submit a grant, a leaf grant, to.
Apply for, you mean?
Yeah, apply for it, apply for a leaf grant, a five-year, for $50,000 each year, that would support marketing and any extraneous expenses of this economic development position.
Why did they pick the village versus the town?
What are they asking in the support?
Since the town administrates the.
I think it makes sense to have this within the village rather than the town.
But that's where Haley is, in the town, I mean, it's kind of an extension of that office, if I'm not mistaken.
I think, well.
Isn't this gonna be a Roost position?
Well, I don't think that's the thing, it's they're trying not to, it's their Roost position.
No, so, what they're, what they're, what they'd like to do is take one of their 501, there is a 501(c)(3), and this arm would operate through the 501(c)(3), and there would be a separate board that would administer, um, the direction of this position.
So it wouldn't be an employee of the village?
It, it is not an employee of the village.
Well, then how can the village get the grant to fund the position?
It's not only an employee of the town, either.
Well, no, it's gonna be an employee of this 501(c)(3).
Correct.
Why isn't that entity then making the application for the win?
Well, you know, probably, I can make that statement back, that's, why would we get the leaf grant if we're not gonna have?
But that doesn't mean we can't promote the idea of looking into this position like the original.
That is correct, right.
And even if it is, by another two or three board meetings, we can always.
Is this a 501(c)(3) by Roost stones?
It is, they, you, it's going to be a, yes, and it'll be a doing business. It is, they, you, it's going to be a, yes, and it'll be a doing business as the town and North Ello Village of Lake Placid Economic Development Position.
It's the old one, it's like Placid Chamber, the one that-
I was just gonna say, that would be the one to put it, I mean, Chamber of Commerce is historic in your person use.
That's what I think. Isn't, wait a minute.
I have the exact-
They do have the-
It is the LP ECQB.
Yes. Quality Destinations.
Quality Destinations, yes.
That's not the old Chamber, that's, that's-
That's the one that ran the children's games.
Right, yes. So that's the one it's gonna be done under.
But back to Janet's point, why would we even qualify for the grant if they're not? That would be like applying for money you gave to somebody else.
Further complication of why they would want us to do it.
Well, the request originally was for us to say we would be happy, or we would like to look into this position. I, I'm all for looking into it, I think it, let's take one step at a time.
I think it's one position within the village, or town, or wherever you wanna put it, that can actually-
Is it a grant writer?
No.
Bring more money into the area, if you have money to-
It, it is going to be a contact person that's gonna connect business to business.
And leaf grants don't have to be until September, so there's still plenty of time to do it.
So it's a Chamber of Commerce?
In, in essence, that's what I'd say, yeah.
Not a full-service Chamber.
Yes.
So moved.
Okay.
I'm dying out there.
I don't know that it needs a motion, and that's just-
That's fine.
I mean, what if, would you move that you're-
We're considering.
You're considering it.
Maybe, did they just want our support?
Yeah, but we already got that, we got that support two weeks ago. That's fine.
So are we good at this point, or?
We are good, we're fine, I'll just go back to open, say, we need more information.
Okay. And I think because I didn't circle ahead, this time, we can actually move on to the correct letter. H, Electric Department Promotion. Timbaland, would you like to speak, anyone like to speak to that?
Ryan, he's been at school, he's done fifty-four months, he has other requirements, so if he gets his next step, I'll be personally assigned. I'll make the motion to approve Ryan Taylor.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, well, back a minute. You, you appoint him to that position, and you guys approve the appointment.
I appoint Ryan Taylor to first class line.
At the, at the bargaining unit.
Reviewing contract.
Then you guys approve the-
Do I have a motion to approve my?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You did it. Okay, um, item I, NDA, Annual Conference, September sixth through nine, Syracuse. I believe that's-
For Kimonai to them.
Okay. Uh, do I have a motion? So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. It was a fun one, approval of noise ordinance permit application. You all remember, that was the question from last time, and I do believe that the wedding planner has agreed to,
Point of contact.
Be point of contact, I was gonna say den, whether, I guess that's not a good word. And, um, also, there will be a Crown Plaza person there, and the two of them will hopefully guide them. Do I have a motion? So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passes as well. Um, use of pontoon boat for Rotary Duck Race, September tenth. So moved.
Second.
Now, I, do we now need to make sure that it doesn't go over five miles an hour, or are we authorizing it to do it?
City use.
Okay.
It loads the ducks.
It's not electric anywhere.
It's not no luck.
Right, and let me wrong, is this later than normal?
Yes, it's traditionally, yeah.
And like July, yeah, June or July.
I wonder, might not even be any water going over the dikes.
Well, there wasn't last year, they had to take the boat, make a wake, push them over. I think the boat ducks were busy in August, so they-
That's Sydney's favorite thing to watch, is the- Yeah, the duck stand duck race.
Uh, do I have a motion to accept? Or approve?
Sure.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yes, for a good cause. Okay, anything else? No, okay. Um, Treasury Items, Approval Warn Aftedate Number Twenty-three.
I'll make the motion, can I?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passes, is that due this time, Jackie?
Yes.
And he got pulled, was it one week off? Thank you very much.
I was even here early today.
Anything else to come from Treasury? Okay, very good. Um, is there anything else under new business? Anything under old business? Very long, under mayor items, I think, um, you know, the guy I mentioned is Main Street. I believe they're down to two hookups for laterals, like, if they finished up McKinley Street today, then they'll be doing School Street and Fire Hydrant by the Legion. And then their, their next-
I think they did that one, I, when I came down Main Street today, that's where they were, right in front of those, right by the Legion.
I know they're trying to get done really quickly, so that they could move into, um, shimming, so they'll be ready for Ironman. So I, I believe all that will be tied up. And, and Peter, do you know anything about Blue Spruce, are they, what are they slated to come back? Wasn't that supposed to be the eighteenth today?
This, this, this week, we're in, was the date given a month ago.
All right, they're not here yet, but they, but they do look like they've gotten most of the sidewalk work done, going over towards-
Getting, well, they had to put curbing in, uh,
Okay.
by the municipal lot, and then at the Thunderbird, before they can do their work. And apparently, the oil situation-
Hasn't been resolved yet.
I haven't thought it was resolved this morning.
Did he? Oh, that's good to hear.
So stop, let's see, sorry, he's right.
And from what I've heard, once these things are done, there's not much they're gonna do when they come back after, after Labor Day, and they're still, they're now still planning to blacktop mid-September instead of, like, October, so.
Yeah, so what about the plantings, is that next spring?
I believe they're this, they're this fall, when I asked Brad, but I didn't get a nailed-down date.
So that brings up a couple of people, well, yeah, it's not good. But a couple of people have stopped Charisse to, to ask her why she's not weeding some of the plantings, and I said, I know Brad tried to hire somebody to do that, and he just didn't have it.
Still haven't gotten an app, okay.
No, I know, so Charisse is kinda like, what do I do? Maybe ask the gardener to, I know of a couple, but I think they're not like-
Oh, I'll, I'll let her know.
So do we, do we ask Charisse to do it? I said, come on, they're not weeds yet, are they? And she goes, yeah, they're starting.
It's always good to get ahead of them.
Do we ask Cindy Beard? No, we don't.
To put her on the payroll?
Maybe it would be great if everyone that knew anybody to encourage them to apply for this position.
Well, you know, that, and those plants are gonna need to be cut back for the winter.
I know.
There's, there's a lot of maintenance to those plantings that have gone in, hence the pots.
Hence the pots.
Hence the pots.
Well, and the Main Street position, we're hoping someone will build us. I suppose in the interim, it might be possible to contract with someone if Charisse doesn't have time, but I guess we'll look into that.
Let's watch Brad tomorrow about that.
Okay, you've gotta know?
Yeah. I don't wanna ask her to do more right now, at this point. Not that she wouldn't be willing, but I guess.
Well, I think you had made the, the possibility that maybe the garden club wouldn't mind helping us out in the interim. I suppose that's a question we can ask.
That is, that is.
Well, it's not, what's that, like, those, they have volunteers that come in, and you didn't do all that stuff?
Adopt a garden. Okay, that's about all I've got, Commissioner, or Mayor, Mayor Items. Other than I've seen firsthand how Tiberkey stays on schedule. They ran into a very unusual hookup when they did my building, and they were gonna be done at five, and it turned out being eight o'clock, and they just stayed there till the job was done. Great to have a, a group that's willing to put in the extra time, I'm sure that's why we're a year and a half ahead of schedule. Okay, um, Commissioner Reports.
Um, just an update, so originally, the family wanted to put in, um, a rock, and I went back to them and made the suggestion of either a granite bench or a picnic table, and they're going with a granite bench.
In the same area?
Yeah, same area.
Um, so they'll apply for that?
Yeah, okay, working with Brad on getting pricing.
Perfect. Anything else under Commissioner Reports? Public comment?
I was wondering if I could get a copy of the Ironman contract they've signed? Or is it, is the vote technically supporting you signing the contract?
Yes.
Okay. Um, yeah, I was just wondering if I could get a copy of the contract.
I have, um, I've gotta do a little bit of, fill in some blanks on it for addresses and things, and give it to Roost, and then, um, ask them, and they get it. Thank you.
Anything else?
What was the thing that you were talking about with the club?
It is called the Communication Board, and it is, oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, I mean-
No!
So it's a, it's a, um, a Communication Board for children that are, have no verbal skills, and it's, um, a bunch of icons or pictures on a board, so kids, or adults, or anyone with communication issues can point to pictures to communicate their needs and wants.
Oh, yeah.
I'll follow ahead.
Okay, great, um, anything else? Okay, at this point, then I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Tracy, go home and tell, tell Brad all the work that you gave to him this night.
Uh, don't forget tomorrow's session.